Good evening and welcome to our Facebook livestream of the candidate forum for the office of Oklahoma City Public Schools Board of Education Chairperson. The event tonight will be hosted by the League of Women Voters of Oklahoma County. My name is Rebecca Greenhaw and I'm president of the Oklahoma County League. The League of Women Voters is a strictly nonpartisan voter education and issue advocacy group serving the residents of Oklahoma County. Our mission is to promote active, informed citizen participation at all levels of government. Thank you for joining us tonight. We hope you will find the experience worthwhile. I will now introduce the candidates for this evening's forum in alphabetical order. We're pleased to have with us tonight Mr. Charles Henry and Ms. Paula Lewis, candidates for the runoff election for OKCPS Board Chair. Both candidates are city members of the OKCPS Board. Mr. Henry currently serves District One and Ms. Lewis is the current chair. Ms. Lewis has two sons. One is currently a student in the Oklahoma City Public Schools, while the other is serving in the US Army. She holds a master's degree in business administration and graduated from OU's Health Science Program with a bachelor's in occupational therapy. She is the founder of Quest Pediatric Therapy and works to unlock each child's potential in her clinic. If elected, she will focus on increasing the quality of education, increasing pay and benefits for educators, bringing stability to the administration, removing barriers and promoting equity in Oklahoma City Public Schools. Mr. Henry has three children and is a product of the Oklahoma City Public Schools, graduating from Northwest Class and High School in 1987. He graduated from the University of Oklahoma, earning a BA in political science, minoring in communications and history. His JD degree is from Texas Southern University. Mr. Henry is a member of the Oklahoma Bar Association and owns the Henry Law Firm. If elected, he will focus on structured discipline policy, closing the achievement gap, quality remediation, a safer return to school plan, and a commitment to students with special needs. Our moderator this evening is Ms. Rhonda McLean. She is an LWV OKC Board Member and she resides outside of Oklahoma City. She will not vote in the election for Oklahoma City Public Schools Board of Education Chair. In regards to our questions tonight, I want to thank the community for the great response to our call for questions. If your question isn't answered during our event, at the end of the event, we will provide an email address where you can send your questions directly to the candidates. And with that, I will now turn the forum over to our moderator, Ms. McLean.
Thank you Rebecca and thank you everyone for joining us. Tonight's format, each candidate will have a two-minute opening statement and then we will start with our list of questions. Please, if you're on our Facebook Live and you have questions, submit those to us and we will get in as many as we can. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer the question and each question will be posed to both candidates. So with that, let's go ahead and get started. Mr. Henry, your opening statement is up first and you have two minutes beginning now.
Thank you. I appreciate you and thank you for having me. Again, my name is Charles Henry. I was born and raised in Oklahoma City. I'm currently, I currently serve in District One of Oklahoma City School Board, which comprises Northwest and Northeast Oklahoma City. And I'm running because I couldn't sit back for four more years and watch as there is no focus on academic outcomes of students. The focus and attention is being brought to different matters. I am going to propose a structured discipline policy, which will modify the student code of conduct policy, which will allow teachers to do their job, which is to actually teach in the classroom. We'll create alternative settings like quality in-school suspension and quality detention programs that are in an academic setting. So the teacher will be comfortable knowing that if the student is removed from their class, they're not at home, but they're still in an academic setting. That will help identify any type of behavioral needs, emotional needs, mental health needs, or learning difficulties that a child may have. It's hard for a teacher with about 25 to 30 students to evaluate and to look and see, because sometimes a teacher has to be a psychologist to see if there's any way they know if any children have any challenges. And this will help that. Also, I want to create a comprehensive remediation plan. The norm for OKCPS kids, they're two or more grade levels behind. So I want to create a remediation department. For your seventh grade math teacher and you're trying to teach seventh grade math, but the majority of your kids on the fifth grade level, how can they do that? So I want to support our teachers in that. Recommit to special needs. Want to create an advisory committee to the board. My motto is we need to hold the board accountable. I want to bring back public comments and not have those restricted. And I want to do this when I'm, if elected as the board chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Ms. Lewis, you will also have two minutes for your opening statement whenever you're ready. Go ahead.
Well, good evening and I want to thank the League of Women Voters of Oklahoma County for hosting this tonight. It shows your support of public education and I appreciate that. I was going to talk about my bio, but we did that already. So quick review of that, as I am a mom, I do have a child still in the district. He's a fourth grader. I do co-own a pediatric therapy clinic that serves pediatrics birth to 15 years old with speech occupational and speech therapy. So pretty much all day long, every day, I do kids. I have the great honor of having served as the board chair for the past four years and I look forward to more. I just want to take a little bit of time though and take us back to where we were in 2017. So in 2017, when I became the board chair, we had had 22 superintendents in 20 years. We were facing a $30 million budget shortfall. And we had a upheld Office of Civil Rights complaint regarding discipline, disproportionality of suspending brown and black males as compared to white males. So fast forward into where we are now, let me tell you how we address those issues. One is that we immediately put into place a code of conduct and a discipline strategy to try to decrease the disproportionality of suspensions and we did that. We have made way on that. AFT approves. They have to sign off on the code of conduct every single time. As far as pathway to greatness, we fixed the $30 million budget shortfall by reinventing our school and taking money from buildings and putting it into resources. Every kid now has full-time art, music, PE, nursing, counselors, and assistant principals. We did that while we rolled out Embrace OKC and we have Dr. Sean McDaniel, who is now, will have been here three years in June. That makes him the longest-serving superintendent in the past 20 years. So what I want to do...
My apologies. For those of you watching, we'll now go into our questions. Ms. Lewis, you will get the opportunity to answer the first question first. Mr. Henry, you'll answer second and then on question two, Mr. Henry, you'll answer first. Ms. Lewis, you'll answer second and we will continue to alternate in that manner for as many questions as we have time to get to. Again, you have two minutes and you'll get to answer the question and you'll get the same warning signs. So Ms. Lewis, the first question is to you, if you're ready. What are the greatest opportunities before the Oklahoma City Public School Board for the coming school year?
Greatest opportunities?
Yes.
Oh, and the greatest opportunities are, one is to use the technology and devices that the pandemic kind of forced our hand on. So now every kid, pre-K through second, has an iPad. Every third grader through 12th grader has a Chromebook. Our teachers, our amazing teachers, became very proficient at our virtual platform. So we can use this to help with remediation, to help with just basically getting kids engaged. So that's one of the opportunities. The other is to see how our kids really benefit from the trade-ups of P2G, because we didn't really get to see that with the pandemic. Now we get to see how enrichment opportunities such as art and PE and music will affect kids' attendance. And we know that when kids come to school more often in front of a teacher, that they will improve their academic achievements. And those are two great ones. So many. The others are too. Okay, the other opportunities would be to really reach out to the community and just try to draw that community back in. I think we've been missing that. We've missed the activities that school brings together. And we'll be able to use our Embrace OKC initiative to really help with any mental health issues that are a result of COVID. And that's a real thing, whether it be for parents or kids or teachers. And so we're going to see where the community came in and supported Embrace OKC, the mental health initiative, how that will really support us moving forward. So I think the greatest opportunity is getting our kids back in the building, quite honestly. And I think the teachers would agree with me on that and parents too. So thank you for that question.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Henry, the same question to you. What are the greatest opportunities before the Oklahoma City Public School Board system for the coming school year? And you can begin whenever you're ready.
Thank you. The greatest opportunity is the same great opportunity that we have every year, but we don't take advantage of it. And that's helping to improve the academic performance of our children. Children go to school to learn. The primary focus is to learn. Under the current leadership from 2017, our third grade results in both math and reading, this is pre-pandemic decline. So math declined 21% to 15% proficiency. Reading declined from 18% to 16% proficiency. Fifth grade results in math and reading, math declined from 18% to 9%. Reading declined from 21% to 18%. We can go on and on with each grade. 11th grade, over 91% of the 11 graders are not college-ready or career-ready. They have the same academic declines as far as testing in every grade. The majorities of our schools are in this category. This is a crisis and especially with pre-pandemic, this is an opportunity for us to grab a hold and do the right thing. My opponent, she talks about all the things, but nothing in her campaign, she doesn't reflect on the data and the issues that are going on with our school district. We want to make sure that we hold the superintendent accountable, that we have a dashboard so we can know the progress or lack of progress, so that we know what we can do to learn. Also, if elected, it would be a great opportunity because we can bring back public comments and we can have more community engagement, have the public heard and have the community's voices heard, especially in the Hispanic, Latino, and Mexican community, which comprises approximately 56 to 58% of our students. Thank you.
I'm so sorry. We'll move on to the next question for this round. Mr. Henry, you will get to answer first. The question is, when the Pathways to Greatness Plan was implemented in 2019, there were significant problems with the bus service. What plans are in place to improve service and safety once bus service is restored? And Mr. Henry, you can start anytime.
Thank you. I was the only pro, that spoke publicly about this and privately about the bus service before the pathway to greatness was passed. I saw, it just takes common sense to see that when we have these consolidations and schools closing, what is going to happen with the bus system? I spoke about it. I was told from administration that we're working on it. I was told that later on that we did work on, that they did work on it. Then I was told that they were working on it. And so we had all these issues and then when the pathway to greatness was passed, we heard stories about parents leaving their elementary and middle school children at a bus stop thinking their children are at school and they're still at the bus stop for an hour, an hour and a half. So the main thing that we have to do in regards to anything we have to do with the future of OKCPS is we have to increase the pay for bus drivers. Because if we're supposed to pay substantially for bus drivers, we can bring back things like the biomedical engineering program at Northeast, because each school has a specialty. In the past, I think Douglas High School was a specialty in law. Star Spence used to be a specialty in health or journalism. And so a lot of times if a student wanted to take advantage of that, they should be, they would. In the past, I'm a little older than you all, but we, you could catch a bus from your neighborhood school and go to the other school, whether it was a biomedical program or any other program. So if we increase the pay for bus drivers, we increase the number of routes, then children can take advantages of different types of studies that happen at different schools. Thank you.
Okay. And Ms. Lewis, the same question to you. Do you want me to repeat the question or?
No, I've got it. I think you, thank you. There was no doubt that we did have some bus issues with the implementation of pathways to greatness. And there is, even if it was just one kid that had had an issue with that, that would have been one too many. I know the district worked quickly and tirelessly to try to right that. Pre-P2G, we ran 110 bus routes with 100 bus drivers, meaning that some bus drivers drove twice. There's no excuse for the kids that did have an issue with that. We have righted that wrong. But again, there's no taking back what happened. One thing that we have done with our bus services though, post-P2G, is we actually created busing zones. So like District, Zone One would bring kids to any of the application schools that are in Zone One. They live in Zone One. Zone Two would bring that middle of the city, which is Class and SAS. The north is Belle Isle and then south, we have Southeast Middle School and Southeast High School. And that's Zone Three too. So if you live in those zones, we do provide busing. So that is a trade-up from what we were doing previously with busing. I agree, you know, getting kids back and forth is important and safety is number one. Like I always want kids to feel safe, seen, and valued. And you can constantly look back at what we have done on that and that is where we focus our energy. So I do want to say that I appreciate the question about bus safety and please know that we take children's safety very seriously.
All right. Thank you. Ms., Mr. Henry, this will be your first question. With the rise of the Me Too movement, some have called for training for students on the meaning of sexual consent. If elected, would you support including training for students on the meaning of sexual consent in the Oklahoma City Public Schools curriculum? Why or why not?
Absolutely. It's the right thing to do. Anything we can do to educate children on an issue as serious as that, we need to. I mean, we have children with a variety of backgrounds, behavioral, emotional issues, and things of that nature. You know, there is a need, we have to do that, but as the board chair, my focus is to make sure that we have community engagement, public engagement. Because what's been happening is a lot of times we don't really engage the public on how they feel about it. Because that's an issue that parents need to have involvement in before the board passes a policy. Even though it's the right thing to do, it's my job, if I'm elected as a chair, not to make that decision because I think that's just the right decision, but I have to make sure that I get community engagement. So we have to speak to parents, not just, not just allow them public comments, but put that item on the agenda. That's one of the, that's one of the, one of the powers that the chair has is to place an item on the public agenda. Once you place that item on the agenda, then the board, which has to meet in a quorum, can have a back-and-forth engagement with those parents, community leaders, different type of experts in that particular issue. So that's a simple, the simple question is absolutely, but I want to make sure we do it the right way. Thank you.
I want to make sure I heard all the details.
Would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please. Thank you.
With the rise of the Me Too movement, some have called for training for students on the meaning of sexual consent. If elected, would you support including training for students on the meaning of sexual consent in the Oklahoma City Public School curriculum? And why or why not?
Thank you. Yes, I definitely believe that kids need to be educated on what consent means in sexuality. Now, as far as I'm aware, that would be a regulation, but that doesn't mean that the board can't influence and support the superintendent and that. If it was a policy issue, I'd be happy to support that policy. I do want to go back and address though, while I've got a minute, because I 100% support that. Again, I want kids to be safe, seen, and valued. And you can see that in the non-discrimination policy that we've passed since I've been the chair and then amount of resolutions that we've passed to affirm and value our different groups and different celebrations every month. But when we talk about what goes on the agenda, one of the other first things I did as the chair, and it was actually per Mr. Henry's request, was we put an agenda item on that would change our policy to say that if any time four board members want to overrule the chair and put something on the agenda, they can. And I voted for that. So at any time, Mr. Henry and three other people can put something on the agenda if they want to. And when we continue to talk about this advisory board to the board, the board is the advisory board. So that's why there's eight of us. And so it really comes down to collaborating with other board members and working with them to, you know, keep us all moving in the right direction. But at any time, I just want to say to anyone out there, if it's about a kid's safety and what would help a kid feel more safe and have a voice, I am 100% behind that.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Lewis, this will be your question first. How can the Oklahoma City Public Schools be more inclusive and supportive of all minorities, particularly their varied histories in our state and the rise in hate crimes against the minorities?
Man, that's, that's a good question and that is something that I'm incredibly proud of our board and our district. Like I mentioned earlier in the last question, our non-discrimination policy is one of the most robust in the state for sure and probably the country. And those resolutions that we continue to pass, it really comes down to holding Dr. McDaniel accountable to saying that this is what we expect to happen for our kids. This is how we protect our kids. This is how we affirm our kids and say that our strength is our diversity. And an example of that would be the unfortunate incident that happened at Newcastle recently, where, you know, adults failed kids. If our adults, you know, let it go so far that our kids ended up being in an altercation, the adults of the opposing team let their kids continue to do that. And I was strong on that and our board came back immediately and tightened up our safety policy to give Dr. McDaniel a stronger point of view that we want kids to be safe. And hate crimes are not okay. We support all student groups that are good for kids. If it's a student-led group, we can find a sponsor, whether it be Black Lives Matters or an LGBTQ group or Fellowship of Christian Athletes, any of those that will again, help our kids feel safe, seen, and valued and that lets them have a voice. That is where we need to move on that.
Thank you. Mr. Henry, would you like me to repeat the question?
Sure.
Okay. How can Oklahoma City Public Schools be more inclusive and supportive of all minorities, particularly their varied histories in our state and the rise in hate crimes against minorities?
First and foremost, I think the board should listen to their board members. There are two African-American board members who have publicly stated that our voices are not heard. We're not saying that as individuals. We're saying that based on our constituency that come to us. So that should be the first focus. I think the board should take diversity training and implicit bias training from somebody that's nationally certified. Me and the other board member have asked for that repeatedly and our requests have been denied by the superintendent. We have not held the superintendent accountable as well on that issue and that's another issue. But let me read something. "The vision of equity with the equity policy we passed said, 'Particular attention should be paid to students who are socially, economically disadvantaged, African-American, Hispanic, Native American, English learners, and students with disabilities.'" And so our, our vision for equity that the board passed and I agreed to was to take care of this issue. However, under the current leadership, the focus has been primarily on mental health and Embrace Oklahoma, which is a great organization, but it hasn't been on what the purpose of it was. One of the primary focuses for equity was on racial equity because of the racial disparities that are in our schools. And so we needed to, we need to focus on that particular issue and we haven't. So my job is to make sure also that all communities are heard. If all communities feel that they're heard, then we won't have this issue. The African-American community has stated that they're, have not been heard by Ms. Lewis. They actually voted her in office because of their efforts. She got in office four years ago and they felt like she's abandoned them. So my job is to bring the focus back to the public and bring back public attention and put the focus there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Henry, this will be yours to start with. What would you do to put more skills training back in all schools? Would you be open to partnerships with corporations and how would you see that working?
I would make sure we put more money in Title II funding for professional development. If we're talking about skills training for teachers, is that where it?
It's not. It doesn't specify. It says skills training back in all schools.
Okay, well, if, I think they're talking more so about students. They're talking about civics, skills, and that nature. So if we're talking about students, we're talking about civics and skills training based on students. That's absolutely imperative that we, that we do that. I mean, you know, I've took classes when I was in high school that dealt with skills training. And so I think that's very important that we do and we need to. One of the goals of mine is to make sure that we use Title I funding to help with that. Because we have so many students that are behind academically, they're still great students. Tests don't mean everything, but we still have to make sure that students are at least career-ready as well. A lot of students have particular skills that they have. They don't, we don't have to allow them to be successful in those skills when they graduate from high school. So I would definitely put funding towards that, if that's the question. Thank you. And I'm done. I'm done.
Ms. Lewis, what would you do to put more skills training back in all schools? Would you be open to partnerships with corporations and how would you see that working?
Question. So I hear that question to be talking more about vocational-type training, where we used to have our, like shop and different mechanics in our high schools. So our partnerships that we currently have are with Metro Tech. And then in some of our schools, such as Northwest Class, and we do have a commercial-grade kitchen that we teach. If somebody wants to be a chef, or we have different things like that in some of our other schools. But we also have concurrent partnerships with OCCC and that would allow kids to do their high school basics or requirements as well as get into associate's degree, such as nursing or EMT or OT or PTA of that. But most of our partnerships, if they involve putting things in our schools, for example, we have a strong partnership through the foundation that multiple companies have participated in. Boeing being one of them, that we put STEM labs in every single one of our elementary schools. And there's multiple partners in that. So I 100% think that we need to support skills. I agree with Representative Dolan when he talks about that, you know, that we have to let a, let a high school kid and start them young, even in middle school, that they have options and that yes, college is a viable option, but so are vocational technical schools, as are community schools. There's online schools. So I definitely think that, you know, providing a kid with an option is the best choice. And I just have to say, like to say that the majority of our kids are two to three years behind. And I just have to say, like to say that the majority of our kids are two to three years behind, I actually investigated that. We have an average of six months behind in reading efficiency across the board. There are some kids that are two years behind, but across the board, per the district statistics, six months behind in reading.
Okay, thank you. Next question, and we will start with Ms. Lewis, we'll start with you. What measures should the Oklahoma City School Board take to better serve the needs of students with disabilities?
So we can always look at our policies to tighten those up. One thing is though, is holding Superintendent accountable, Superintendent McDaniel accountable to that our equity policy, which does include special attention to kids with special needs. And then really pushing forward on that we expect kids to have the best evidence-based practices out there and that we have a monitoring source of that. And that definitely, you know, especially mandated, so it's not an option, like it's not an option. We have a department that provides physical occupational and speech therapy to the kids. And we do have certain, you know, rooms that are, you know, like not, kids sometimes come in and out of classrooms. Sometimes it's a self-contained classroom. But I think what the board can do on any, anything that you ask is bring light on the situation. Like bring the conversation up. We can do a work session on it. We could have a presentation from that department. If I get an email personally as the chair, whether it be from a fellow board member or a parent, what I do is I respond back to that parent with a copy, Dr. McDaniel copied and say, you know, I appreciate you bringing this to my attention. Dr. McDaniel, it will get you to where you need to be and follow up on this. If you're not satisfied with that answer in two weeks, give me a, you know, reach back out to me. If it's a board member, I generally call and say like, you know, what's going on? What can we do? What are we looking at like on, on this? And just bring up more of a dialogue. And if we need to have a work session, that's it. But it is what I work in. I work with kids with special needs all day long. So my heart is there. And if there is a problem, I guarantee we're on top of that problem.
Thank you. Mr. Henry.
Yes, ma'am.
What measures should the Oklahoma City Public School Board take to better serve the needs of students with disabilities?
It's a great question. I'm glad you asked the question. It's part of my platform. I can tell you prior to the pathway to greatness, I was the only board member that publicly spoke up about this. Particular children with physical disabilities and severe physical disabilities and mental disabilities. I was a proponent of keeping Johnson, the Johnson, the Johnson School, a school that would primarily focus on that. A lot of those children have been transported to another of my schools, Ridgeview, which is a great school. You got great teachers. But as far as the self-contained classrooms, it's not the same. And so we need to recommit to make sure we understand what disabilities are because you have a broad range of disabilities. And my opponent has been talking about mental health, but you have behavioral health, learning difficulties, emotional wellbeing, and some of these issues are intertwined. So we need a primary, we need to primarily focus on that. I have one gentleman who has a son that's autistic and he's having trouble finding a school, middle school for his autistic son. And that's something that as a school district, we should care about. And I'd like to just say one thing, my opponent talks about holding the chair, the superintendent accountable. Prior to the February election, she did not talk about that. She just talked about, let's just follow the superintendent. And I was the only one talking about accountability. I was the only one talking also about getting public engagement. And now she's talking about public engagement. But I've been talking about these things from the beginning of the campaign. And also, I also want to state that when she talks about six months behind in deficiencies, if you have a, a whole grade level that's only 9% reading pre-pandemic, that is not that they're just six months behind. So I like to see that data. Thank you.
Thank you.
And for future use, I don't want to rebuttal. So if it's, we can move on with the question, but it's hard for me to not rebuttal if she continues to rebuttal. So if you don't have a problem with that, I don't, but I just want to make sure I, I stick to what your rules. So I appreciate you. Thank you.
Two, two minutes. So after that, you're cut off and then we're good. And you were within your two minutes. So, Mr. Henry, this is the first question to you. What is your vision for education in this community?
My vision is that every single child can at least graduate at grade level or advanced. That is a primary goal. My vision is that all the communities are heard. My vision is that we start making progress in academic performance of our children. My vision is that I hope that we also achieve true equity in our board policy, which is not just to have focus on mental health, but the primary focus are on families with socioeconomic and also different types of racial identities and physical, and to students with disabilities and English, English learners. I want to make sure bilingual students get the support and program approximately about 13,000 to 14,000 of our students are bilingual students. Each bilingual, our school district gets an increase in funding for each bilingual student. However, that money, that increase is not being used and earmarked for the purposes of bilingual programs and studies. We only have six schools that can accommodate, which are called newcomer academies for bilingual students. And those are three middle schools and three high schools. But our district is predominantly 56 to 58% Hispanic, Latino, Mexican. And we need to start acting like it. And so that's my vision for the Oklahoma City Public Schools. And also that we have a comprehensive remediation program so students can achieve those academic outcomes. And I have many more things too, but I only have a few seconds. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Yeah. What is your vision for education in this community?
My vision for education community is that our kids have access to an amazing education. That they have access to the fun parts of school and the hard parts of school and that we increase the rigor across the board so that our strategic plan does end up with what a successful graduate looks like. And that when our kids graduate from us, that they, that they have options, that they can make the choices they want based on the skill sets that they came out of school with, not based on, this is all I can do. I don't want all I can do. I want, look at all the things I can do. But that starts in pre-K and even honestly starts before that. Part of the things that we did in Pathway to Greatness is four of our buildings are now birthed to three centers. And then we have pre-K centers as well that we're moving through. So what we need to do is, and that's what our equity is, is removing barriers to every single kid, knowing a kid by name and need. And that requires administration from the top down to focus on kids and bring in whatever is necessary and look at our budget and see where we move that. We are moving towards equity specifically for our hardest schools in the IT schools, which have to do with wrapping kids up, our hardest kids, and really teaching teachers how to get these kids access to their academic success. And we're making great success with that. And we're having better teacher retention on it. And so my vision for education is that it's an education. And it's the education that all of us would want for our kids. Every single one of us would want our kids to feel safe, secure, listened to and taught appropriate information, historical appropriate information and our basics of writing and math and reading and math.
Thank you. Okay. So Ms. Lewis, this question goes to you first. What is your opinion on the recent state school board's four to three vote to direct public school funding to charter schools?
You know, I, I think that the process was a little bit questionable. I 100% understand why charter schools want access to ad valorem taxes because, you know, they want to do what's best for their kids too. I'm concerned that the board came out and voted on that at the, against the advice of their legal advice and their superintendent saying they didn't believe it was constitutional. And we, we have a standing in this particular case in 2017. The Charter Association Oklahoma Public Resources, Public Resources brought that against the state board and Tulsa Public and OKC Public joined that. And so I don't know how you can have a settlement without us being at the table. So I have a great hope that they rethink that and that we can go back in and, you know, look at this as the people who have interest in this particular legal situation. If not, then, you know, we'll have to go from there and see what our legal advice says. But it certainly seems, just the process seems flawed. And obviously we need to have conversation about it, but that's, I hope that we can get back to the process being correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Henry, I'll repeat the question for you. What is your opinion on the recent state school board's four to three vote to direct public school funding to charter schools?
I'll answer the question directly because you asked the question. It's in litigation. That's something for them to handle. It's probably going to go on and on. But currently, my concern with charters getting the funding, if it, whatever they're legally obligated to do, to get, that's a legal question. So if the legality is they get it, they get it. If the legality is that they don't, they don't. Morally, I feel with the disparity with our traditional public schools, it's hard to take funding away from that. And we look at the racial inequities of how the charters are being supported, particularly in Oklahoma City Public Schools, that are charters maybe for black and brown children or charters are in communities where they're affluent, maybe white affluent communities, the type of things that I see as a board member. One of the things I saw in one charter situation, which is causes me to have the opinion that I have, is because they created in the Wheeler District a charter school and the borderline cut right off at the Will Rogers Public Housing Unit. They said it was a coincidence, but I was the only board member that spoke up on that. And they did make some accommodations. The current leadership did not speak up about that issue. Also, I'd like to say that the Greater Oklahoma Chamber of Commerce, when it comes to education, their primary focus is charter expansion. And my opponent has been endorsed by the Greater Oklahoma Chamber of Commerce. And so that's why you may get the response you get. But with me, I don't support that particularly right now, but whatever the legality is, if it's whatever they're legally entitled to, I don't have any control over that. And as, if elected as a board chair, I will make sure that I listen to all constituencies. So I have kids that are in public schools, but two of my children went to Kipreach Charter. So I have children that actually went to charter schools. So I'm not opposed to charters per se. But I want to make sure that our traditional public schools get strengthened. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So the next question, Mr. Henry, will go to you first this time. What are your thoughts on how to handle the large number of students who have not done well academically during the pandemic?
I may have answered that a little bit already, but I, my, the focus has to be on a comprehensive remediation program pre-pandemic. And so if I'm answering your question correctly, I got excited about it, but the pandemic, with the pandemic, it's going to be a bigger challenge. So we have to have a comprehensive remediation plan. I suggest we have a remediation department so we can focus. It's kind of hard when you have a seventh grade or ninth grade teacher trying to teach a grade level, but they can't. So we have to make sure we have a comprehensive plan to let teachers know that they're comfortable in teaching those. Also, there are students that are doing really well and have a particular skill set. If we can increase our bus transportation systems, those children can transport from one neighborhood school to that school that may have a specialty and that they can, they can kind of get that. But my primary focus is very simple, because the academic challenges that we have with our students, and that's the focus on remediation. Also, you can have all the great ideas that we have, but if we don't support our teachers in the classroom with all the disruptive infractions, none of those great ideas can work. So if you want to have academic outcomes, we have to have a structured policy. We have to have a modified student code of conduct policy. Ms. Lewis said that we didn't have it or we did have, we don't have a modified student code of policy. We don't have a structured discipline policy. I campaigned on that four years ago about a structured discipline policy and have been talking about it for four years and we haven't had it. So remediation, control, limit the disruptive infractions by bringing quality in-school suspension, quality detention and other quality programs that can identify the student behaviors, which is causes the disruption. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis, the question goes to you. What are your thoughts on how to handle the large number of students who have not done well during, academically during the pandemic?
Well, we certainly had a group of kids that struggled through the pandemic. It was unprecedented and they're going to bring to the table quite a few things that we need to address. But I do know that one of the things that we're doing is we're running a robust summer program that's not so much like summer school as much as summer enrichment to really try to get these kids back engaged, get them socially back with each other and moving through that. So that when they do come into school in August, they've had a couple of months of kind of transitioning back into the classroom full-time. You know, jumping the gap is hard at any time. And what we have in place that is going to be to the, you know, definite support of all of our kids is we have a great team. We have an assistant superintendent, Dr. Jamie Polk over elementary, Dr. Melanie Mouse over mid-highs. And they are working with their ILDs and teachers and they are working through everything we have with our virtual platform, with our new curriculum to get in there and really figure out how we're going to be specific with a kid, know them by name and need and how we reteach immediately. So on these IT schools, that's what they're consistently doing. They meet weekly, not just about a group, but about a kid. All kids get talked about. And if 40% of your kids didn't get this information, then you reteach it and you reteach it until they get it. So it's spot-on-the-day learning of that. That's what we need to do in order to remediate these kids. But remediation is kind of an outdated term. It's really teaching these kids in the moment and really removing barriers as we go. And we are ready for that. This board moved forward and put things in place that had us ready for the pandemic without even knowing it was coming. We had our budget right-sided so that we could provide everybody a device. We had Embrace OKC so that we could address the mental health and wellness needs associated with it. P2G put counselors and nurses in schools.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Okay, Ms. Lewis, this will be your question first. And it's, it's a little bit long, so bear with me. There's been requests to see the creation of a dashboard to progress monitor all of the projects included in the pathway to greatness and to disclose full transparency to the public. Do you believe the public has a right to know both successes and failures of the pathway to greatness?
Yes, I, I do. Yes, there's been a request for a dashboard. There's been multiple conversations about the dashboard. It's, there's things that have been provided to us for P2G and updates that said like, how many teaching positions were filled or how many projects were done? But there's not a dashboard. I asked specifically the other day, like, is there an example of this dashboard? So I could kind of get behind and push it, but I don't know why we haven't been able to get a dashboard up, but I support that. But as far as transparency, which is really a good question, you can go on our website and you can see three years of budgets and audits. So if we say that we're putting our money where equity says it should be, you can track that on our website. You can see, you know, our live stream meetings are transparent. And again, at any question that if somebody wants to send me an email, I will answer that and I'll get back to it. My question for my opponent is he has been on this board for four years and he is talking about the same things. The things I said I was going to get done, I worked with board members to get it done. So I don't know what's going to be the difference with Mr. Henry sitting in the chair seat or District One, getting done what he says he wants to get done. And that's a frustrating position to sit in because when he talks about the Wheeler District, he did, he did speak up about that Wheeler District. But if he didn't have a majority of the board members to vote with him or for me to hold that off the agenda until they made that concession, it wouldn't have happened. So Mr. Henry is not doing this on his own. He's doing it when the board works with him.
Okay, Mr. Henry, same question to you and I will repeat it. There's been requests to see the creation of a dashboard to progress monitor all of the projects included in the pathway to greatness and to disclose full transparency to the public. Do you believe the public has a right to know both the successes and the failures of the pathway to greatness?
Absolutely. If we don't know, we know the successes, we can cheer that. We know, if we don't know that what the lack of progress is, how can we move forward and be successful? That reveals a current board member, if you go to the Oklahoma City Public School Board meetings that are live-stream, she's talked a lot about that, a lot about it. I've talked about it, I think, today and campaigns that we need a dad. Campaigns that we need a dashboard so that we can know the progress or lack of progress about any academic outcomes of students. This is something that we've talked about, I'm sure this is something that board member Bills has talked to Ms. Lewis about. She has not supported it, she has not come out publicly and said we need a dashboard. We've been asking about it for months and months, I think it's going on over, over a year or two, and she has not supported us. And so just like on other issues that we talk about, we get the lack of support, and so my job as a chair, even if I have differences with somebody, even if it's somebody that I may not get along with or anything like that, my job is to support all the board members that we have. One thing that we have to do with the dashboard, it helps us to identify if there's any title money, like we talked about remediation earlier. There's Title One money and Title Two money to help with remediation programs. And so having a dashboard gives the board and the administration a focus, and it lets the public know exactly what we need to know. And if you want to talk about the Wheeler District or any issues like that, I don't have the date right in front of me, but you can go livestream the Oklahoma City Public School Board meetings, and you can listen to the discussions that we had about anything with the Wheeler District. But to answer your question specifically, I am a strong proponent of that, and I can proudly say that that's something that I've been advocating for a while, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and it looks like we have time for one last question, and Mr. Henry, this will be up for you first. And the question is, what have been the greatest successes of the last Oklahoma City Public School Board term in terms of benefits to Oklahoma City Public School students?
Can you repeat the question again?
Sure. What have been the greatest successes of the last school board term in terms of benefits to Oklahoma City Public School students?
Well, you know, when we look at the academic outcomes, we do see a decrease. However, some of the successes are when we talk about our community partners. Because even though our Oklahoma City Public Schools have challenges, our community partners are trying to step up so they can help us win any gaps that we may have, and making sure that our students are successful. Some of the other successes is our parents and parental involvement and community engagement, that people are speaking up. They're seeing the issues that we have with our school system, and they're wanting to speak up. One of the successful things that I want to think about of those teachers and administrators here with Oklahoma City Public Schools, even in regards to all the challenges, because we need to keep our teachers, because they're great teachers. And like I said before, a teacher has to be a teacher, psychologist, a counselor. And so one of the successes is seeing our teachers seeing it through. Particularly during this pandemic, I've seen the success of how our teachers stepped up when we did remote learning and how they advocated and how they taught well. I have children in Oklahoma City Public Schools, so I can personally say that I see the role of the teachers and how strong their role is. Also, our paraprofessionals and all our administrative workers during this particular time in the pandemic. I just want to say that, you know, that is something that we can focus on, because even though we have these struggles, there are people that are willing to roll up their sleeves and work hard, and so that is something that I'm most proud of, and I appreciate, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Lewis, I'll repeat the question for you.
Thank you.
What have been the greatest successes of the last Oklahoma City Public School Board term in terms of benefits to Oklahoma City Public School students?
Well, there's been a lot, I mean, there has been a lot of successes for Oklahoma City Public School students. They range from Fields and Futures has completed twenty-nine projects at middle and high schools to bring state-of-the-art sporting outdoor fields to our kids, cleats for kids, cleaning our kids. And those are some of the partnerships, we did outfit every single one of our elementary schools with a STEM, STEM room, STEM lab, which is a result of partnerships. We have through P two G, now every kiddo gets a full-time counselor, at least one, full-time art teacher, music teacher, P E teacher, counselor, and assistant principal. Some of our kids had never had an art class, some of our classes, teachers, you know, they just had never had an art teacher go to them. So that you can't underestimate the value of that. We have had smaller class sizes as a result of P two G and the average of, we decreased the overall average to three and a half. Let's see, our I T schools, we went from zero to eight of those, and we worked with A F T to increase stipends and so that we could draw our most talented teachers and school leaders to those sites, and that's a success that is good for kids. Embrace OKC, like I said, is bringing in evidence-based programs to teach our kids protective factors, to offset risk factors. And every kid now has a device, iPads and Chromebooks. And we are moving the needle on academic success. And so that's the number one thing that has worked, but I will say that superintendent stability and board stability is one of the keys to keeping this momentum moving forward.
Thank you, and thank you both again for being here today, we're going to have Rebecca hop back on at six fifty-three, so we do not have time for another question before the six fifty-five end, so we'll potentially in just a couple of minutes early, Rebecca.
Thank you, Rhonda, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Well moderated.
Thank you.
Thank you to both our candidates and our moderator, our backup people. Thank you so much, everyone who has joined us this evening for our candidate forum. If your questions were not addressed, I'm going to give you those email addresses, and we'll also put them in the chat. The email address for Paula Lewis, if you want to address additional questions that weren't, we weren't able to answer tonight. Her email is paula@questpediatrictherapy.com, that's paula@questpediatrictherapy.com. And for Mr. Henry, henryforboardchair@gmail.com, that's henryforboardchair@gmail.com. And I will put those in the chat here momentarily. I want to encourage everyone to check the League of Women Voters of Oklahoma Facebook page and website tonight to see about the event that's taking place tomorrow night. There is a criminal justice reform update scheduled for Tuesday, March thirtieth at six P M. I thank you so much for your participation, for everyone's questions, and for the answers that our candidates so ably provided. And I will put those emails in the chat, and then we will end our evening together.